We, just a reminder, you know, take a look at the signature file, make sure that you're coming in at least once or twice a week to sign up. And the social media agreement. We're taking this in order, or you want to hit the Parks and Rec thing, or just?
No.
Ooh, someone's got feedback. Hopefully it's not me.
If they're not speaking.
Now, you want everybody to mute if they're not talking?
All right, so are we going to do the social media agreement, second order of business, I guess?
Yep.
Okay, so everyone has seen the the signature document that was put together, I guess reviewing the town of Stratum or something like that, because that's mentioned on one of the pages, I think, but.
Yeah, it's just an example for people. If you agree to it, then we'll just change Stratum to Plymouth, unless you have changes.
And kind of naive, but who's this going to be signed by, or, I mean, it's going to be put into place, and that anyone using our Facebook will also have to sign something and submit it?
You reviewed this, too?
Yes, yes.
Did you want to see these pages?
Yeah, that'd be great.
I mean, it's totally up to however you like, you know, whatever you think. If this is
overkill?
If this is overkill, then I I just literally just changed them. It's just, just to get the ball rolling.
Yeah.
So if you have something better, something more simplified that you want to offer up?
Will, will it be directed to us, who are maintaining the page, or, I mean, because a user, I mean, we're not going to allow people to post on the site anyway without our approval, right?
As I understand, that's the case. That.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well. I think that's what we, that's what we agreed on two weeks ago.
Well, to clarify, you mean, to make posts, but people can make comments underneath those posts? Just so everybody's fair.
Yep, that's true. At least as this, as this policy's written, it would also affect like the police department and the fire department and
Yeah.
those folks as well. PBTV.
Right, yep, it's true. It would affect everybody, so.
Is that what you were striving for, to have like a universal policy for all the, you know, you know, people that are maintaining Facebooks?
Well, I haven't seen the policy if it's going to affect all of us, and I don't think Tom has either.
Steve, do you actually have a policy?
Do I have a policy on Facebook? I have it for officers for personal use and stuff like that, but I don't have one for like the department usage of it. Not opposed to one, absolutely, we can have one. I just haven't seen that particular one, and I'm not going to be opposed to that one either.
Yeah, I haven't seen it either. I didn't realize it was going to affect everybody.
Well, so while we hold off on taking action on that, and.
I'll send it to Tom and Steve and let them give their input, and if any of the board members have anything that they want to add to it or delete from it, you know, to make it a little more comprehensible. If you could just look it over and red, redmark it and send it back to me, and we'll doctor it up and put it in the file, put it up for a vote next meeting.
Are there any other boards or committees that are using social media in any meaningful way?
Commission's offices.
Town clerk.
Yeah, Town Clerk's office, but she's part of the town hall.
None that I'm aware of, probably just personal.
Parks and Rec, I mean, yeah.
Is Parks and Rec using Facebook?
Yeah, Parks and Rec has a Facebook page.
So this would apply to them as well?
Conservation Commission, I believe, does.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah. Yeah, so there are others. So I'll send it to all of them.
I mean, another way, like, is just to publish our policies, like, we have an electronic policy for in the town manual, employee manual, sort of like a communications policy. It can just be also part of that, sort of like an amendment to that. You have to at least read it and know it's there. That's something that would be easier.
Okay. All right, so.
Just take out number two.
Of course.
For the town's website only, or Facebook page only, and doesn't affect anybody else that might already have a policy in place.
Yeah, we can look at it some more.
Okay. All right.
All right. Program policy.
It's that noise. It's Mary Ann.
Oh, sorry.
It was Mary Ann.
She's eating her ice cream.
So, did I miss the whole thing? I was locked up.
Oh, no, we'll just, I mean, I'll, I'll send it out to the people that it might affect, but we can also take out that part two, that it affects any other department other than our own town hall.
Yeah, I think if we're going, if we're going to do the town hall, and there are like several, several others that are just, you know, out there, if, if it could be like a university applied or at least a recommendation.
Yeah. All right.
Well, Larry's out of here, but Lisa, do you want to kick off Parks and Rec summer policy, summer program policy?
Here he comes. He's back, and we're just going to unmute him.
I'm sorry, Bill, was that for us? I'm sorry.
Yeah, your, your item is.
What we're here to discuss basically is the staff put together a summary of the 2.0 day camps from the Governor's Task Force, and we broke it down into eight categories, and I think you guys have copies of that. We, we have drop off and sign in. We have camper belongings. We have groups, size of groups that will break the kids down into camp activities, reinforcement on hygiene during camp, cleaning and disinfecting, pickup, sign out, and illness protocol. And we're basically here just to discuss if the board has any questions on any of the policies that were put together.
Okay. I guess I have a question, whether, you know, Tommy was involved in either reviewing or signing off on it, or?
Yes, he was. We forwarded a copy of these policies to Tom for review.
Yes, I did approve that plan.
Okay. And does anybody have any questions?
Actually, I had a couple. I was comparing your notes, Larry, with what the governor had said, just a couple, and some were curious. So the size of the groups, how many, how many kids in the groups, what, two staff members and five, six kids in a group?
I think, I think we're looking at 10 in a group. Lisa could
Okay, so. Okay, so this isn't anything we are changing. We adopted small groups, I want to say about eight and nine years ago. We'll often go to a field trip and see 10 campers for one counselor, and we see how that has been challenging. So the 2.0 is not new to the rec department. We've had small groups for a long time now. So we're already in the guidelines for the grouping of the students and the staff, and we've been for years. So that's nothing new to us. We're going to have stations throughout the school, and that's nothing new to us. We've been doing that for years as well. We're not a rec department that just throws 50 kids in a room with 20 staff and throws the ball around. We're very instrumental in spacing activities out with a curriculum, you know, design that we all put together. So at any given station, there might be two groups, because that will fit in the guidelines of the Governor's 2.0. But most often, there's a staff, a CIT, and three students.
And will that, will those groups remain the same throughout? So with, in Sam's case, will Sam always have the same group of kids for the whole five weeks?
No, no, there'll be different kids moving around, just due to attendance and due to who worked and.
Gotcha.
But often, she might be with those kids. And then new this year is we said you can only sign up for the four weeks. You can't come and go. We don't want Sam sitting next to some student who said, you know, they were out of the country or across the country. It's, it's our, it's the, the people together for four weeks, the same people the entire four weeks. Good question.
Can I just ask a quick question? As you know, there are several other towns who have canceled their summer programs. Do you think that you're going to have a, an abundance of non-residents participating, and any concerns with that at all?
We are strictly going to have it for residents only.
Thank you.
Non-residents are calling in.
Okay.
But we haven't been able to accommodate them for years now. We're, we're pretty full with just Plymouth residents. We've been full with waiting lists on many of our programs.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Are there, are there fees attached to the program?
Yes, Neil, we're still working, I'll be working with the commission on that to determine, to come up with a weekly fee and also a trip fee if, if we are allowed to offer trips. Last year, it was $60 for a one-week session. That because we're only going four days a week. I will be meeting with the commission to come up with a fee. We may be looking at around $40 a week, $40 to $50 a week.
And Neil, there's also the D'Addenzio Camp Memorial Fund. They support a lot of students, and I talked to Kathy Crane the other day, and she's able to support families that are suffering from COVID. So we'll have that resource for families that are struggling with the cost. And then Larry has also said that we should not have any restrictions. If a family comes in and says that they want their kids to come and they can't afford it, we can, we can figure something out.
Thank you.
Is that it? Well, thanks, Lisa and Larry and, and the commission or the committee that also helps you, helps you out. Is Brian still on your committee, or he was only that because he was a select board member?
He's still on. Well, he, he transitioned from a select board member to a commission member, Brian.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah. We feel pretty confident that we're going to be able to, I mean, again, a lot of the stipulations we've put in place years ago, and some of the new ones, we were comfortable with, with learning from them and encouraging them to our campers and continuing on with them. So we've, we've got a lot of social distancing games put together. We've got the school support. We have, again, the stations to spread out. We've always practiced strong hygiene. We've consulted with the bus company to see how we can do that safely, and they'd be baby trips, so to speak. I mean, none of this, you know, go to Maine for a day or go to the ocean for a day. We'll, we'll be taking baby steps all along the way and just having the students and the staff's interest, you know, at the front of everything that we do.
Well, I guess, thank you very much, and it's great that you can do this for the kids and the parents, too. So, great job.
Well, thank you for your support.
Well, very good. Congrats.
And thanks to Tom for all your help and assistance with us.
Of course. You're welcome.
And you guys can stay around if you want, or take off. It's up to you.
I'll be around for the next session.
Okay. And I guess next up is face mask ordinance. And I've had a discussion with, well, several people. Kathy and Tom, and, and also with the, who is Mike, Mike Rigger at Primex, who was basically having a discussion or at least an opinion of whether or not there's a liability issue with perhaps going forward with a face mask ordinance on reaching certain conditions. And then Mike suggested Steve Buckley to consult with at NHMA, get the opinion of a municipal law expert. And Steve sent that request to Nate Graze, who responded in NHMA's name. And it seems like, well, there's no real hurry on this to actually come, come out with an ordinance. There are, you know, several dates that are coming down the pike that would be worthy of waiting for, obviously. The first is Nashua's mask ordinance is being heard on June 18th. They, they went forward with a mandatory mask wearing in their businesses. And there's also the oh, PSU with their putting together a plan to start a fall semester. That's also going to be coming out with a process late June. So that will also affect or could affect, you know, this as well. So it seems as if, oh, and also there, there was discussion about the Governor's you know, order number 20 or 40, rather. And that, that order essentially indicated that employees of, of yeah, what, the, like, food, food industry, food service industry, that they shall wear masks, the employees shall wear masks, and that they shall inform employee, you know, visitors to a restaurant or something like that, that they should be wearing masks. So there's really no imperative that, you know, if you reach a certain point of either infection in the, the general community or some other metric, that you could invoke this. However, the, the governor has said on several occasions, primarily that any municipality or, you know, town or city can, can invoke their rules regarding face masks outside his order. So I think it might be prudent to go ahead and develop something. And then if the, you know, the Nashua mask mandate is pretty much thrown out by the courts, or actually, if it's actually overruled by the courts, that would probably affect the success of our, our ordinance. Also, depending upon the, the, at least the, the processes that PSU's are going to invoke, that would also affect it. So but regardless, I've become, looking at the, you know, different metrics that might be something to tie our ordinance onto, and that might be like bed census from Spear, and they, they have beds set aside for COVID infections. So if that starts to, you know, generate bed utilization, another is the ACS, ACS opening, and number of beds that are being utilized in the ACS, and then also the numbers of cases reported by PSU. So that will be a pretty good metric, actually, to, to see if that might be, you know, the point where we would probably invoke an ordinance. So therefore, I think we've got at least a couple of weeks to get something that we might be able to put together just to fly by our attorney. And I'm kind of proposing, well, first of all, if it's a worthy project to pursue, because basically, it's in the interest of public health and life safety. So I'm wondering if there might be, well, actually, is there a need or desire to have maybe a subcommittee of the board draft something that, you know, the full open review in a couple of weeks? And that's what I'm putting out.
I, I agree. I, I think that this is a very important measure to take. We should have, have the switch ready to go. I'm supportive of this idea as well.
Okay. That being said, actually, Mary Ann, a business owner, do you have any? You know?
No, I mean, obviously, we wear it, staff wears it. Yeah, I wish everybody wore masks. I'm just wondering, so when Nashua, is it in the courts now, or?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, the, it starts the 18th, it'll be brought?
I hear it the 18th.
Gotcha. So you're thinking of doing something before that, or at least having something in place?
No, no, definitely not. So probably drafting something that may be thrown out, depending upon, you know, the results of that court, of the court case.
Okay.
Or it's also possible, too, that their ordinance might have been irregularly worded or overreaching in a manner that we would not overreach on ours, you know, so you know, it'd be interesting to see what the court actually says about, you know, their ordinance. Either way, either they, you know, overrule it or they're consistent with it, you know, they that is dependent upon how we frame ours.
So do we, are we taking their ordinance and, and kind of building ours around it, from it, place to start from it, or start from scratch?
It could be a place to start. I'm, I'm thinking the rationale that the court will use to either throw it out or accept it like it's not overreach, that rationale, and based on specifics, like what, you know, what the court actually sees in that order, that is incorrect or inconsistent with, you know, the fact that the governor's saying they can do whatever they want, and there are legislative, I guess, problems, you know, that we can't overreach what the legislature can deem is their bailiwick. So so it's kind of consistent, it's dependent upon that court case, largely. I mean, we can do an end run, too, to come up with different language that, you know, that even our attorney might think that it might, I but regardless, I'd still like to come up with like a draft ordinance that we can play around with based on either that ordinance or, you know, or the, the result of the court case, and also hand in hand with PSU's plans for their opening. Because it's, the, it's going to be largely affected by the population, the community of the college, that university, that might be driving this decision. You know, if they have a bloom and, and, you know, they have contingencies of how they're going to handle illnesses, and whether or not that's sufficient, might, you know, might not even, you know, necessitate something like what we're proposing. So it's kind of like dependent on their ability to contain and you know, not, you know, expose the, our community, I guess. Well, Joyce has her hand up.
Yeah, you know, and I agree with all.
You muted yourself, Joyce.
I, I definitely agree with the concept, and I'd love to see, you know, the state legislature take a more active role in this, but I don't know how it's enforceable. And maybe at PSU, they don't let a kid into a class if they don't have a mask, but, but as a town, I don't know how we can prevent people from going into Hannaford without a mask. I just don't think that's enforceable.
So I think, you know, maybe this is less than satisfactory for the fact that, I mean, you could put a fine on it. And I guess it's more to empower a business, thinking that, you know, they don't really have a right to say, hey, you need a, you need a mask on. We prefer you to have a mask on when you enter our business, versus having a, a sign up on the wall saying Plymouth mandates that you shall wear a mask when entering this, this premise.
I think the problem here is that when you mandate things, you get a back, you get a, a, what do they call that? You know, you get people pushing back against it. And that's a lot of what we're seeing this week, and this horrendous week with, with, you know, the military aspects of the police and everything. It's exacerbating the situation rather than helping it. And I think if you mandate people that you have to do something, you just anger a lot of people, and they'll come back and say, I'm not going to do this. I, I just, I think there could be a backlash, Bill.
I agree with Joyce on this.
I do also.
So you know, New Zealand doesn't have COVID disease anymore.
Yeah.
And they did that because they mandated certain things that, so now New Zealand does not have it. So, you know, you, I mean, it's, I mean, you can essentially just free everything up and say, you know, go for it, you get sick, you know, that's it. But you're putting everyone at risk if you have a sick individual coming into a business and breathing, coughing, sneezing. So a mask will actually prevent droplets from leaving that person's.
I don't deny that at all.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, Steve.
Has anybody seen the new Keen model right now? It's called Keen Safe. It's on WMUR, it's on their, it's on their webpage. It's a whole program that they did with all the businesses there, and all the businesses agreed to it, and they didn't have to pass an ordinance. You can read all about it on WMUR. I think it's a wonderful program that they started. There are signs up in front of the businesses, and the business owners had every right to tell people that if you don't wear a mask, you cannot come into this business.
Okay.
Well, so I, I don't, I just saw it on WMUR this afternoon. I'm not really familiar with it, other than I liked the concept, and I agree with Joyce in, you know, taking more liberties away from people nowadays is just going to, you're just going to get pushed back on that. And if we can get everybody to buy into a program, I think that would be much better for our community than mandating them to do something.
True, you know, but even still, we'll take a look at that and see if that language would suffice, because I know you, you're not going to be able to enforce this. Putting a $200 fine on it is just going to probably piss people off. But the, the issue is like, I guess, changing behavior so that they know that they're probably doing something wrong when they enter this business place, even though they say, well, you know, go to heck, you can't do anything. I, I still, well, anyway, Keen Safe was probably worthy of taking a look at and seeing if we can do like a Plymouth Safe or something like that, or, but.
Mr. Chair, I agree with what Joyce and the chief were saying. Certainly, we can encourage private enterprise to make their own rules, and the problem would be, and Steve was right on it, what happens to that person walking up to Hannaford, not, you know, who's unmasked? They know they have to put on a mask when they go in there, or they won't get in to get their groceries. Are we going to dispatch officers to encourage people to mask up whenever they get out of their car? But that's a completely separate thing. My real question was, are we going to wait for the court case so we can look at specifically what the court didn't like about Nashua? I mean, is there any point right now of trying to come up with a schema, instead of waiting two weeks to see exactly what the, what the court's disapproved of in the Nashua ordinance? It might say this is a lot of work if we just waited out. It might say this is a lot of work if we just waited out the time.
Yeah, I think that's probably doable. Or not doable, we won't do it.
I would agree. I think that's going to be key. That that ruling on the 18th.
You're only ten days.
Yeah, exactly.
Is that Supreme Court or Superior Court?
It's Superior. And so it's, I mean, it could even go on further, you know?
Mary Ann, without a without a chamber, is there, what what's the mechanism for the businesses? If we were to pursue that Keen Safe? Plan to to get together and even discuss that, do you know?
Well, so it's easy to get the Plymouth, you know, community town business owners together to have that discussion. I'm I'm really excited to read about this Keen Safe, but. Interested to see how they're approaching it. So I didn't see, didn't really, it it's not a mandate or it just haven't read it yet.
I haven't read the full thing. What I what I saw on WMUR was it, it's the businesses got together and decided to do this, the. The city of Keen decided to help them out with that process. And that's, this is the program that they developed. It's not an actual ordinance, but all the businesses that agreed it, you're gonna enter my business, you have to wear a mask. And they actually developed signs and everything else, you know, this is, you have to wear a mask upon coming into this business, and it says Keen's Safe on it and everything else like that.
Right, it'd be interesting. I, because I. It seems like an agreement among the businesses, a quote unquote gentleman's agreement among the businesses. I I just wonder how they actually all feel. Do they really? I I don't, right? We don't even allow people in and don't plan on allowing people in for quite some time. I actually don't know how other businesses feel about that. Do they actually share that same concern or not? I can't, I can't speak to that, but it's certainly worthy of a conversation with. You know, the board and the business owners, like if we want to go down that route.
The the few I've talked with, Mary Ann, more than a few. It it seems like they're all over the map. I mean, there's certainly some who. Are not interested in turning customers away at this point.
Right, yeah, I can't even get, like I said, don't, I can't, I don't have my finger on that one either. It certainly feels like a mixed bag, but.
I think so. Bill, at the last meeting, there was some talk about the university having a mandate when the students went on to Main Street or into the businesses. Is that still in the works with their plan?
Um, no, I think they backed off on that.
Okay.
You're talking about like, if they come up with, okay, you shall wear masks downtown or?
Yeah, there was some talk about that.
Yeah, that's, I think they either saw the light that they can't do that or. You know, figured that that can't be mandated.
It's kind of the same quandary that we're in. Once, once they're off of their footprint, they're just citizens. So any, I mean, they're. They can hold them hostage by their scholastic records part. Certainly, you know, there is some power on behalf of the university there, whereas, you know, it's the same thing that that. The town of Plymouth would be faced with. Once or people are out in the street. It's really difficult to. Put them back in the bottle, if you know what I mean, you know, it's 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 either going to. Generate real bad will or possibly, you know, instances with with Steve's guys. And, you know, we don't need that at this point.
It also would not make sense to have two sets of rules, one for students and one for the rest of us.
Right.
Well, if, yeah, exactly. But however, you know, they, the rules that apply for them on campus aren't going to apply elsewhere. So.
Right.
It's for for them, for us to expect that they will wear like a mask in a business place, then, you know, we'd have to come up with something like Plymouth Safe or whatever.
Or leave it to the businesses to regulate, which is what Mary Ann was saying, and I think that that is the key.
Actually, I know you said that.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure I I said that either, actually.
Brian said that.
Well, I mean, it's it's their place. If they want to let people in, they can let them in. I mean, it's the same thing. This is all part of the the whole argument that we're having. Where? Does the town of Plymouth or not have the power to? Have people wear masks in public? So. You know, it, we don't know that. And the only way to fight it at this point is for us and the business owners and everybody else, like the Keen Safe model. To set a good example with very little punishment if you don't comply.
Yeah. Honestly, there probably very little punishment with regard to an ordinance as well, except there'll be informational generally.
Right. But, you know, it's it's kind of somebody's going to say, what's the point of having an ordinance if all you're going to get is a wrist slap and it's built into it? Not that I'm arguing, but you can see that people would come out with that.
Brian, because it gives you a sign that you can post saying, oh, geez. You know, it's not my, it's not my fault that I'm I ask you to wear a mask. It's the town of Plymouth. They they're suggesting that you, for your safety, for my safety. To prevent, you know, illness and death. Boom. So, you know, it's one way or the other, either like a Plymouth Safe or. An ordinance that really is literally not that enforceable. However, more informational. Like, either way would be good, even for. You know, the students that might be downtown. And just a side light to. Joyce indicated that, yeah, the who? You can't hear it online? Or we know?
Oh, she's muted again.
It's fixed.
Okay.
Josie was trying to listen. She couldn't hear it, but it's all fixed now.
Okay. All right.
I have to say, though, it does give a different, it does give a different look at it. Knowing that we're going to have a group of students, what, 4,000 students? Come back in end of August. And so the town's going to double in size. I I'm certainly concerned about that personally and professionally. So I don't know if that's another way of. Enforcing it or or saying to the businesses, here's some really, you know, valid, we're going to double in size shortly. You guys should be concerned. I don't know. It certainly concerns me. And how do you get buy-in? I'm just not sure. Just was thinking that out loud.
It does seem like if something comes from the town, instead of all of the businesses having to. Enforce that individually, they they do have the ability to point at us and be like, this isn't our rule. It feels like that would be convenient for a business.
It does, except unfortunately, we can't enforce, right? The as a town, we, there's no way we can enforce it. So I feel like the other way around, that the businesses go, you know what, we're going to do, you know, good citizenship and. You know what? The right thing to do is not allow people in.
But that's the right thing to do for the businesses right now and they're not doing it.
This is true. That's why I thought, you know, we're gonna, even the summertime, right? Hopefully, we'll be doubling or good and bad doubling in size. And it's everybody's best interest.
Yeah, I mean, I I saw large groups of folks downtown today.
Yeah, definitely.
Coverings.
Yep.
I I'd just like to say something. You you know, I I respect all the opinions I've heard. On this. But. We also. Need to consider the fact that we could have a spike, an outbreak, a surge, whatever they call it. And we might have to have something. In the in the wings that we can resort to to stop it. You know, something that requires a real heavy hand. Not that we want to do it, but we might have to. This is such a large crowd and they're coming from all corners.
You know, well, John, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, again, wait and see what happens to Nashua. We can start. Drafting something, but the university is, you know, going to have a larger group that has to be. Has to be handled and. See what they have and that would still, they would probably have something, you say, the end of June, so that would still give us six to eight weeks to draft. Something up and. We have the, we have the blueprint for Nashua, so. We can go from there. We don't, we don't have to stop working on it, I don't think, but.
Oh, okay, Steve.
I just, I have to point this out to the board just because I thought about it. You know, Neil's got a giant point having to do with the the kids coming back and having a spike. And everything else like that and wait, but everybody's talking about waiting and this is the issue with waiting also. Is that? Somebody's going to say, okay, say, we don't have an outbreak or whatever. There was no emergency. The governor. Started opening things up. The data proves that Grafton County is one of the lowest outbreaks that we have. The data is pointing to everything. He's allowing restaurants to open at full capacity here next week. So. If you go and pass an ordinance without going through your normal channels of passing an ordinance, other words, having the. A town, a town meeting, a public hearing, those channels. You could lose it on that alone in that, hey, there's no emergency here and you didn't go through the right channels to. You know, to start this ordinance up. That's that's my fear. I just have to tell you guys that.
Well, I have to look at what Nashua did, but they passed it in a in a select board or council meeting.
Yeah, but that was my, it was weeks ago, though. That's that's my point, that you you're you're lessening. The, I would think your authority to pass it without having a public hearing. The longer you wait.
Okay, thanks, Steve. What we could probably do is accommodate both. Both things. We could have like a Plymouth Safe. That would be, you know, kind of like a gentleman's agreement. You know, we don't allow you in without, I mean, similar in the language that that Keen may have done. And then when and if there is a spike that is a result of illness that kind of gets out of hand. Primarily because of the university. You know, that's a, you know, just. With multiple states, kids coming in that would be communicating their illnesses. Then we can go with like, you know, a second, second step. But.
Excuse me, we we think they're they're going to require testing, correct? Prior to?
Are. Their intent is to still go with Abbott Quick Test, which is 45%. Bogus, you know, like if they give you false negatives. So if you have a negative, you still have to test with. So it, that's that's to be determined, I guess, how the how and when that test is going to be administered and. So we'll.
It's also, as we know, a snapshot in time and and that's not to say that they won't contract it on the bus ride up here or down here.
Right. And but there's going to be continual monitoring, too, also temperature. I mean, so they're going to be on top of of. You know, trying to monitor, you know, either an. A flare or, you know, a a wave of illness and and then. That's to be seen, though, their policy, because that's still kind of in flux. But. You know, so again, it's like based on, you know, their outcome of their processes that we're going to find out at the end of June.
Right.
You know, with the understanding that that's the the key here is like, you know, 4,000 kids. From Connecticut, New York and. Forever Massachusetts and. Something probably should be in place before. That happens, so. Anyway. Lisa, I saw your lips moving, but were you, were you speaking or? Okay. Anyway. So. Yeah, let's let's take a look at that, you know, Keen Safe and see. Modify it, make it, you know, ours as well, maybe.
Maybe Mary Ann can share Keen Safe with your with your business owners and see if they're, they would be agreeable to signing the pledge.
Yeah, I would. It's not, yes. So is it really, is it, is that what it is, though? The businesses take the pledge?
A bunch of businesses signed off on the Keen, Keen's. Keen Safe program.
Gotcha. And and who drafted it?
Take the pledge. I don't really know who drafted it.
Yeah, it's kind of funny. I'm looking at the, well, at the MUR story and stuff, and the last set, the last paragraph was. So far, business owners said that they haven't run into any problems except for some people who refuse to wear a mask. Those people are told they can't enter a business. But McGree said he set up a couple of chairs outside his footwear store to take care of them. So.
That's good.
So as long as Eminem Scoops has tables outside their their place, they can have like shoe sales.
Yes, we can buy one, get to get the second pair. I don't know.
Anyway. That looks kind of sweet. Thanks, Steve. We we didn't really nail that down, but that's okay. We got, we got time to to play. And. Anything else? That we can accomplish in the work session?
You'll meet again on the 21st, correct?
The 22nd.
22nd.
Yep.
So that'll be good that that we should have information from the Nashua case by then.
Yep. All right. And.
In person.
What's that?
We may be meeting in person by then.
Yeah.
Nice. It's going to be a very full room there, though, if we're still. You know, social distancing, which I will be still social distancing, so.
Yeah.
And wearing masks. Anything else you want to throw in for the next 10 minutes? Kathy or anybody? Let's go to stand up.
Yeah, Bill, you know, look, just looking around and I work up at the golf course. I mean, we're getting people from all over New York, Rhode Island. We're getting these people in now. I mean, they're they're at Market Basket, they're at Walmart. And they're they're not wearing masks. They're not. You know, so so I think we're getting a a sample. Like I say, on weekends, there's a large crowd. But even even during the week, we're getting people up from Massachusetts, from Maine and and everywhere and. As far as I know, we're not seeing any spike or anything right now. Again, the students would be a different situation, but.
Yeah.
Bill, do you remember if they talked about when the students do come back requiring them to self quarantine? Because usually when people come from other states, they make themself quarantine for 14 days.
Yeah.
Neil's time must almost be up, huh?
Yeah, four more days.
Oh, okay. I don't recall them talking about that, though, do you?
Sorry about that. I think because they're testing everybody, they're not going to require the 14-day quarantine because of the testing.
I got tested a week ago Monday. But I don't have any results yet.
Oh, yeah, I know. They're supposed to take two days. I think it took me two weeks to get mine.
I had three days, but.
Mr. Chair, we did, we did have a request from the. PBTV about the pledge. With everybody speaking, it gets garbled with the pauses that were built in. And I was wondering if we could just have one member. Actually recite it while everybody else stands and, you know, quietly.
Lip syncs.
All right. Actually, why can't like one of you three? Do it for us.
You mean like Kate? Karaoke? No, that's perfectly fine.
Brian.
Uh, no, Anne has been chomping at the bit and I know Jules has too, so.
You don't care where you point, do you?
I pointed at the screen, but, you know.
Since the four of us are together, we can say it together.
That's true.
You don't have to be singled out.
Where's the, where's the fourth? Is Juliet there? Is she?
Oh, she's out of camera angle. See her hand.
She's hiding.
All right, well then.
Hey, Bill, um, so. So people being masked coming into Eminem Scoops is one thing. But. You know, there's more people going into Market Basket and Walmart.
Yep.
So should we be having conversations with them as opposed to Eminem Scoops?
Yeah, there's, you know, if it's a Keen Safe or Plymouth Safe, then, yeah, we we need to discuss that with them as well. You know, we all want to be safe, not just downtown.
Right, so I guess what I'm saying is, so the businesses that I speak with are mostly, you know, independently owned, that type of thing. Don't have. Don't have large, you know, conversations with Hannaford, Market Basket, Walmart, those groups which everybody goes to.
Yep.
And, and is that a place to start with that Keen Safe, Plymouth Safe type of situation? I, I don't want to single them out, but you know, they're hitting 90% of the population in Plymouth. This is one of those places.
You didn't mention Walmart too, I don't think, but yeah, Walmart too.
Yeah, yeah. Walmart, Hannaford, Market Basket. You know?
Yep. Yeah.
You know, if those guys buy in or gals buy in, that will go a long way.
Yep.
So how do we have that conversation with them?
Uh, Brian will have it.
I knew that was coming, Mr. Chair.
Well.
We can take a vote on that.
Well, actually, Brian, I, I wouldn't mind. Well, first of all, let's, um, you know, we've, we've got the Keen Safe thing and we've got, you know, the document. So, yeah, Brian, if you have a contact that we could sit down with, I wouldn't mind sitting down with them.
I'll see if I can dig one up. I'm not really familiar with the new market, but, uh, we can certainly get ahold of a lot of the larger presences out on Tenny Mountain Highway. It seems like the downtown business community has always been tighter knit. They pretty much have the same mission. Um, it'll be an easier sell through them. It's the national chains like Mary Ann was talking about that'll be harder because they have corporate policy as well as local policy. So they serve two masters.
True. Yep. But I would imagine they'd probably get, um, similar issues like in Massachusetts too.
Oh, absolutely.
Sure they've been dealing with this, so. But, um, okay.